Call us, please, Councilman Page, the Regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your honor, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remove the silence, please. All right, thank you, have a seat. Roll call.
Karlovic.
Here.
Heister.
Here.
Reifner.
Here.
Brochus.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
The executive session was held on July 20 to discuss personnel matters and real estate. Is there any public comment on agenda items only at this time? Make a motion to approve the minutes of July 13, 2020, and the reports of the fire department, police permit treasurer, engineer code office, and planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Heister.
Special presentation, Alex.
Yes, Alex.
Okay, my name is Alex and I'm here to give a quick presentation on housekeeping. And I was working for the city as an intern over the summer, so here's what I learned and what I benefited the city with.
I'm with you.
Okay, first I'll start, what is a record? A record is anything that's created by the city or anything that's legally violent, like a contract that's a party thing, how it be into a record that needs to be kept. And then what is not a record is more like a manual email between different people. Length record, like length form that need to be filled out and whatnot. Okay, so what the part I, the target was pretty much on the municipal record manual figuring out if the city is keeping all the right records and what, keeping their specific amount of time. One thing I noticed that the city wasn't quite doing the best was a write to know request or keeping it for 30 days, which they should be kept for two years. Well, how I benefited the city, like I found out like there was so many records that we should have been keeping. There were lots of records that we should have been disposing of, like I don't know later on, but one record I found was from the 80s, which should have been disposed of many years ago. And I've also made sure of easier to find the records later on down in case you had a write to know request. And some fun facts for record keeping that I find that I can get pretty much. A municipal record manual can be stored, municipalities can store records via email, but a county cannot. Non-permanent records can be kept electronically. Permanent records can be kept electronically too, but I was going, wow, more requirements on that later on. And how to keep records, they can be disposed of once there's no administrative value. One thing that I made that was most beneficial was an Excel sheet. And helped me figure out what, why it need to be kept, made it easier for to digest the manual because the manual is quite long. So it made it easier for me to understand it and I feel like it made it easier for like someone else to look at it and understand what records need to be kept. And then one of the major benefits of it was if the record was, let's say, very confusing, it fell under like multiple sections of the manual, helping figure out which one has the longest retention requirement and go by that instead of just picking the shortest amount of time. Making sure of following all of that. Okay, and then I'm going to explain quickly what my cell document looks like and, oh, you can see here is my cell document and kind of how you can view it. The first one, the first column is where you can find it is the manual. The second one is what the record is, like what the record is, the document name of it. The third is a brief description of it. And the fourth one is if you can keep it electronic or not. Red means, of course, means no. Yellow is like, most of the permanent records, I would say, should be kept in a hard copy form. That's, I'll explain later, that keeping them electronic can be very difficult and more confused than just keeping a hard copy and then just keeping an electronic copy just for the purpose of being, you can easily store and find it. And then green means you can easily store electronic if you choose to. And then the fifth column is when you can start counting down how many years you need to keep it. Like for example, if a contract, that is, you can start, you have to keep it six years once the contract expires. So that'll tell you when you can start counting down the years you need to keep it. The sixth column is how many years you need to keep it. And teleporting made it easier to put that glance. Purple means you got to keep it permanently. Pink is as long as administrative value, so once it's no value, then we put municipality, they can just get rid of it. Blue is one to 10 years. Green is zero years, so what, most of those would be like, once the contract expires, you can get rid of it. Was once that's been no longer available. Orange is 10 to 75 years, that's the longest requirement, writing record that's not permanent. Okay, and these are some of the questions I asked people from PHMC, which is Pennsylvania Historical Museum and Commission, because even they said that record retention can be difficult to understand. So I asked a few questions, like how long do DCED grants need to be kept? They said most of them will be three to five years, but they can vary depending on the record, not the record, but the grant itself. How long should write to know request be kept? Like I mentioned earlier, we were following 30 days, but the manual states two years. I just want to clarify that one, so. How long should bids be proposed to be kept if the city no longer plans to go through the project anymore? And the manual, it doesn't state how long that needs to be kept. It just, and then it's like, the guy said, you should follow unsuccessful bids, so that would be three years. And then I would ask, how long do I need to keep a contract for a rental, like keeping started for a wedding? That would be six years because it falls under our contract. How long should a decoration disaster be kept? This was confusing because like, I found out in the basement, it's like, it's more should have been called a declaration emergency proclamation, so then it'd be kept permanently. But now knowing that declaration meant permanent, was a proclamation, it's kind of hard for me to figure out, but we got the manual, they would figure out that it was proclamation. Next one is how long should proposed warrants be kept, ones that are not passed? This one, it states, the guy who said, it states nowhere in the manual about warrants that are not passed. So he recommends, it falls under AL-1, which is like housekeeping records. But the guy from PHMC recommends keeping it five years because it can fall under petition. It's like a recommendation, but you don't have to keep it five years, you just get rid of it once there's no more value for the document. And then another question I asked, is there any type of record that need to be kept in two copies? And there's no record that needs to be kept in two hard copies. But like some, like for permanent records, I would recommend keeping, like I was explaining later, that I would recommend keeping two copies so you don't lose the permanent record. And then how long should grants be kept that are not DCED grants? Most of those will fall under like eight year retention requirements, but again, most of them, some may go more, but most will be the less. But he's recommending like, once you figure out, close out grant to contract, like make sure you figure out the retention requirement, then not later. And then some advice I have for the city and some any results. I found in the basement 11 boxes that could be discarded records, as I've said before. One was from the 80s that should have been disposed of a long time ago. It made it easier to find documents, like there were so many, just by game, there was so many records, it's a lot easier to find the documents. And that's like making, like the permanent records, make it easier to keep an electronic copy of the record. Like, I remember keeping the hard copy of the record down in the basement, but having an electronic copy upstairs on the computer, it'll give you the benefit of having electronic copy, easy to access it and share with other people, without having to go down to the basement, find it, scan it, send it, and take it back down. But then not having to go through with all those strict requirements from PHMC about keeping permanent records electronically. And then another one I found beneficial, put a date on the record because like if you don't know, you don't know the next city clerk or whoever was before them or whatever, may not know when a contract expired or when the contract was completed. They may have to go through the minutes figuring out, okay, this is when the construction project was completed, which can be very time consuming, but if you just write the date of the conclusion of the job, it'd be a lot easier to figure out later on if you need to keep it or it expired. And I'll quickly explain how to destroy records. First is obviously find the records you want to dispose of. Second is how, what records you want to dispose of, which is can be very simple, just all you need is like health insurance, 2011 through 2016, that's all you need from the list, and then make a resolution to dispose of the records and go on to dispose of the records, and then make sure you have the list of records you're disposing of in the resolution. And then the electronic guidelines, they are quite confused, but they are quite strict and confusing. Like it had like probably close to like eight pages as to how to keep it electronically in the manual, which I would recommend, and that's just for permanent records. Like non-permanent records, they can just be kept electronically on a, in an email, for example, and you don't need to go through any specific guideline. But some of the requirements are that you have to keep it PDFA format, must have backup file and access copy, and it's present security preservation file, which I feel like three of those files might be more time consuming than beneficial than just having a hard copy and then having an electronic copy on a flash drive or scanning it into the computer. Then you don't have to worry about following these guidelines. And another guideline that they have is for each record that are permanent, you have to send a form in to PHMC to get them approved at each and every time, for each one, not like every year, just each specific record. So like ordinance, you got to send a form in, and we want to keep our ordinance from 2011 onwards permanent electronic file. And same for like resolutions, appropriations, and other permanent retention requirement. And then finally, I feel like overall, I feel like this was the full picture of what the basement looked like. I mean, with the being like out for a couple days last week, I did not clean up it. Well, based looks a lot better than just before. But like benefiting, you know, 11 boxes, felt like it helped make it easier to find documents. So advice I have, make it easier to have the next person come in to find the documents and rather looking through, that was those piles trying to find it.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
So Alex is part of the municipal interim program through, from Pennsylvania Municipal League. He did a fantastic job, really took a lot of initiative going through that records manual in detail that he did, so we really appreciate his help. Great job.
Thank you. Councilman Reifner for who can use this.
Okay, I have a motion to pay $38,031.46 from the general fund and $2,133.90 from the liquid fuels fund. I make a motion that we pay those bills.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion also for the week or the eighth of August, for the general fund of $16,312. $226.12 and for liquid fuel funds, $668.88. I make a motion that we pay those bills.
Second.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes. As far as tax exoneration goes, we have had, we have eight people apply. Five of them were deceased, two of them were SSI, and one of them already paid elsewhere. Totalling $721.93, I make a motion to exempt those individuals from the taxes.
Second.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Now, I have Ms. B. Gallagher Long from CEDOCAG, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. The CDB-GCV applications and projects tripped what's called a language access plan need. And this is due to the American Communities Survey information that was gathered that shows that there is a less than well English speaking population of 2.1% in the city. And even though normally a language access plan is not triggered unless you have above 5% less than English speaking, less than well English speaking residents, because the projects for your CV application are direct assistance to your residents, it triggers this need for a language access plan and a language access coordinator to be named by the city. And what that means is all the hearing notices just have to have one line on them that says translators will be made available. And then the coordinator, working with CEDOCAG, the city has to have someone named as the coordinator that a resident could call and say that they're going to require a translator. So for instance, your Chromebook with Shiklemy School District Program, if a family that is going to go through the income intake process would call and say that they need to have a translator, then you would work with CEDOCAG, we would get the income intake survey translated into whatever language they need and provide that.
Need a motion to...
So you need us to do a motion to approve the plan?
The plan, and then, yes, and then you need to name a coordinator.
Motion, Madam Gifford.
Jolene.
Jolene, Jolene, Jolene is the one.
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Okay, next on the agenda is a RACP for SRI. So this is a redevelopment assistance capital project. Sunbury Revitalization is submitting an application for renovations to the Albright Center. In this case, the city would be the grantees. This is a similar arrangement as with previous DCED grant, $200,000 that were the grantees for. And then Sunbury Revitalization is the sub-grantee. It is a $6 million project, they're applying for $3 million of RACP funds. They have to have $3 million of matching funds that they are going to get through sponsors and donors, a USDA loan grant, and also using the appraised value of the Albright Center as matching. Require a commitment letter stating that the city of Sunbury agrees to be the applicant and work with SRI on the grant, and then the mayor's signature on the application form that is in your packets there.
So you need a motion?
So we need a, we need a motion to approve being the grantee for this RACP application.
I'll make the motion to be what you just said.
Grantee.
The grantee.
Oh, second.
Okay, Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Chris, just one question. Was the Albright appraised?
That's where the $300,000 came from. I don't know that it was right now appraised, but that was the appraisal that we were given from. Somebody looked at it. Yeah, somebody, either, I don't think Amy was involved in that. I don't think Derek's on the line, he might be able to answer.
Is this where I'm not using the Chestnut Street project?
I don't know the Chestnut Street.
Derek, the director, SRI, you on the line?
He said he might be late.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is, didn't, didn't, weren't there almost a million dollars in expenditures put into that building?
Yes, still doesn't mean it would appraise it.
Yeah.
It was a rough building, yeah, I mean, it's...
But the appraised, I mean, it got to count for something.
It would, and potentially they'll get into appraisal if needed to help the application out, I would assume. But Derek could be the better answer for that. He's been working really hard on this.
I'll just show in these pictures first and then we'll talk about the conceptual design. Do you want that picture up?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
All right. So we received back the final portion of the feasibility study from MECTech. So this is the conceptual design that we, that we came up with after input from different community members, some university professors. This is conceptual, the overall project itself is $931,000. And just as a formality, we need to make a motion to approve the overall concept as a city project because we are applying for grants to fund the actual project moving forward. Is there any questions regarding the conceptual plan? All right, so I make a motion to accept this conceptual plan as a city project for suite. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Right, Brochus.
No.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
All right, another housekeeping formality. The sweep property itself consists of six city-owned parcels. So I'd make an a motion to begin the process to consolidate the six parcels into one. That way we don't have setback requirements in the center where we're planning phase one. Do I have a second?
So how much of a problem would that be?
It shouldn't be much of a problem at all because MECTech already surveyed everything. They're going to have to give us a survey for the outside, if you will, and a legal description. And we will need to get county approval for that. But I don't think that's going to be a problem for this project. I think it's basically pretty easily done. I will then incorporate the new legal description into a new deed and we'll just deal it to ourselves.
Okay, so you had a motion and a second. Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
No.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Tara Nerk, who has been our administrative assistant in the front office, submitted a letter of resignation effective at the end of this week. She has found full-time employment with benefits elsewhere to her benefit, so the council would like to accept the resignation.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
On that note, Mr. Alex Rissinger, who's been our municipal intern these last few months, has done a very good job and has expressed interest in the job, and we think that he would be a good candidate for it. We've offered him to take it on as a part-time job at $12 an hour, which is the same as what we had been paying the previous, and would the council like to approve the hire?
I have a question, is that position advertised?
We can hire from within.
Because he was already employed in the same department, just transferring over to the NBC now.
Sounds like double standards up until before. I'd make that motion, second.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Next up, on the agenda is the resignation of the city health officer. Mary Sue Smith submitted her letter of resignation to be effective on September 30. She got a new job that would be a conflict of interest with her health officer duties. Would the council like to accept her resignation?
Yes. I made the motion.
Who made the motion?
I did, I'm sure.
In the second bit.
Second.
Very.
Okay, Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
So on that note, we spoke with a gentleman from the Department of Agriculture, and he has agreed to train code enforcement officer to do this food sanitation inspection responsibilities only. Not a city health officer, but a food sanitation inspector. She is currently a part-time employee.
You could ask them about that a while back. I remember the conversation now, they said we can.
One said that we couldn't and another said we can.
Yeah, and we read it and it shows we can.
Because that's all she was. She was no health officer, she just infected purposes.
She was getting paid as a health officer.
Yeah, but she wasn't.
Yeah, so.
That was my problem.
So with the increased training and responsibilities, went to increase her pay by 50 cents an hour and increase her hours from 20 to 25 hours per week.
Still with net is less than what we were paying maybe two a year, so it's, it's a watch. And then we would, what's that? No, no, is there a second section? Do you talk about the health officer?
There is, that one later.
Oh, well, then, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Reifner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
And just a note that for people who are listening on a business restaurant, nothing will change with the process of how the inspections are done. These won't change, nothing will change whether it's just a different person doing it.
Intentional police officer, mayor.
Officer Trey Kurtz has completed his one year, actually, it was only like one second, he concluded his one year of probation met all the requirements to fulfill his obligation and probation status. So I recommend that he be retained as a full-time police officer in the city of Sundar.
So I make a motion to retain Officer Trey Kurtz.
Second.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Heister.
Yes.
Reifner.
Yes.
The city's administrators' job duties, this job description, duties, and responsibilities include preparation and participation with submitting an annual budget. Requires access to microfund in order to review and analyze current and historical budget data, including revenues and expenditures of all city funds and accounts. So I make a motion to have the city administrator have access to the microfund. Do I have a second?
I have a question. Kevin, you see any problems with this?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm an elected official, this is finances for the city, and that's what I'm elected to do. We have a separation of duty with our, there's a choir, and then that microfunds is a lot of line items that I'm not saying you know, you can get into, make a change, and hit the wrong buttons can really screw a lot of things up for us. So I think the county finances should stay in counties and finances because of the buck stop need in there, I think it should stay that way.
I disagree.
Any access that she needs, all she has to do is ask it.
But the, her job description flat out says that she's the one that oversees the budget meeting.
So she will get the budget stuff and she can oversee it.
Wouldn't it be easier just to allow, is there a view?
There's so much other stuff in that microfunds that I don't want to, I have problems.
Can you access, can you allow a view only?
We try to, we try to limit the access to just reporters. There's nothing, they just add to it, once you give you that access.
Again, I think that our, our job description is exactly what's said.
She gets a monthly report, what's the difference? Okay, so everyone has that, how many people have access to the microfund right now?
About three of us.
Does each person have a, does he, does each person have a different logging credential?
Everybody has logging credentials.
So does this microfund save and retain the information, like who changes what in the back?
No, it only does when a report, reports are, write a report, or when you go and you put something in, yes, and say who's in there, yes.
So is there a non-of-the-trust? I don't understand.
No, it's not the trust, it's just a separation of duty.
Well, that's what's listed in her duty. To oversee the function of the city.
I have a notion of doing that job as a city treasurer and city tax clerk, which I oversee all my funding and accounting. My butt in line is something happened, I'm going to respond. And she was screwed up, or Kathy was screwed up, or Penny was screwed up. It's not them in trouble, it's me in trouble. So I have a problem with it, yes.
As controller, I would have to agree with Kevin, because I don't even have access, quite frankly, I don't want to. When, when I need information, things like that, he prints a report back and I, uh, and I review it.
He has more authority when it comes to budgeting.
Joe, what's your legal opinion on this?
I don't think it's a legal question. Um, I think it's legal for anybody to have access, and I think it's legal to deny access. So really, it's not a legal issue. I think it would be legal to allow her to have access, and it's also legal to not allow.
I don't understand what would it hurt, just her to be able to pull the reports as she needs them to prepare for planning, for budgeting? To see year-to-date on a whim without having to go to you?
We're completely from each other.
Okay, so what if, what if she needs access to the reports on the weekends, because she does work on the weekends as well?
Do you want to say what you believe, what is your value that you think you'd be able to get at being able to see that? And if you don't say value, then we don't need to do this.
Right, so, I mean, I don't know if there's a capability in there to do ad hoc reports, because sometimes I'm looking for information about a particular project or about a particular, um, budget for a, a program. And I want to be able to look back and see historical data so that I can be better prepared to, uh, make decisions or, you know, present information on which decisions can be made. I don't see that I'd be manipulating anything at all.
No, I'm saying that, you're saying the separation of duty.
And, and being able to just go in and look for what it is I'm looking for, um, would be better for me, be easier for me to do. Um, like I can, I mean, you, you've been able to pull reports. Um, and being able to get them in the spreadsheet now is, is easier versus being handed a, a hard copy. Because getting, being able to download what I want in a format that I can use is important to me as well, to be able to do my job. And my job description does include participating in, in preparation of the budget. And I think it's important that I can have access to that information.
What, what, what does, does microfunds have to do with the budget?
Well, mine's.
Well, that's what you just had to report, so you just got to keep your microfunds. But then also, like, it also does your payroll, also does your accounts payable, and it also does, uh, your permits, your, uh, permit tab utility.
So you're telling me there's, there's no option to create a view-only?
We were trying, we, we were trying that, and if I do that, she can have that. Pour up one tab in there, and have tabs letting you override everything to get into.
Okay, so since she's an executive, I, I would classify her position as an executive officer of the city. She is employed, but she's an executive officer employee of the city. Do I have to make a motion and we'll go, I mean, you have a second.
Can we ask the administrators of the, of the, the device if there is a view only?
If we can get in there, she can get pull, just your reports, I'm fine with that. But we're, we're working on it, we're working on this since the day she asked me for it. So when we get rid of that one tab, if you just got that one tab, we'll give her all the reports she wants. And that's all she'll be able to do is just pull up reports.
We don't.
We don't.
I'll make a motion, we table it until we find that information out.
That's what we're working on.
So a second.
I'm fine with her wanting the reports, but with everything else, I don't think that's what I like. We have separation duty in our office.
Okay, so what, is there, can you, are you able to give her a training session for a week on the program? So you can clear any kind of objections?
Unless she can use her reports on the.
Alright, that's fine, we have a motion to table it, let's go through the motion.
A second.
Roche's?
Oh, yes.
Reese?
No.
Eister?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
No.
Alright, so some housekeeping, Jody, please reach out to the other city administrators and managers of the local municipalities and see if they have access to their treasures, um, information as well, please.
The one thing, Kevin, make sure you check the company if that can be done.
Yeah.
With view only, that's the main question.
That's what we're, that's what we have, it's one tab, Jim, that's allowing you to give anything in the house we own.
I don't really care if the ceilings go with those, nor do you.
Exactly, I don't care what anybody else does either, it's, it's something.
No, but we don't need to be very.
Just don't know why, yeah, I mean, it's either.
It's very secretive with our high executive level employees, with how the city is run. But that's fine, we're going on to the next, the next motion.
Also, her contract says that she's supposed to do grant writing.
Does not do that. Does not.
Yes, it does, the one I have such, she does grant.
We measured that though, to move that over to city clerk's responsibilities.
Writing grants is Joel's interest, but I wanted to say in that guy.
We vote Joel in.
No, you know, uh, we hired the contractor to write the grants.
But as a contract, that's what, we, we took that out of the contract and we voted, when we took, when Joel was promoted to city clerk. That was one of the things that was removed responsibility from the city administrator, moved into the city clerk. And then we voted again to move that responsibility to grant.
I'd like to see a copy of that.
And then, and then I also still participate in the grant writing by helping, like, organize all the documents and things that the grant writer needs to submit the grants.
Security system.
We've gotten any grants from this grant writer yet?
Yeah, he's applied.
He's applied.
Thousand dollars on this guy, have you seen any grants yet?
There, there's, that's on the agenda down, down the line, wait till you get there. The security system from municipal building, numerous employees have approached me regarding, they're starting to feel concerns, um, because some of our offices, they are, you are trapped in there. Somebody comes in, they start doing something, you're, you're just trapped, it's a dead end. Uh, been requested to look into panic buttons. Um, so Alert Enterprises LLC, Keith Tamburelli is the owner, Keith Tamburelli is also a full-time employee, summary police officer. I asked him for a, an estimate or a quote regarding installing the system into, uh, city hall. And the quote that it was, it was five hundred dollars to install it, and then it would be a contract, uh, for twenty dollars every month to monitor the system through the company. So for two hundred and forty dollars, we get panic buttons for all of the city offices, Correling gets a panic button, and, um, motion centers in the offices. Then I make a motion to, or first I'll ask Joe, is there any issues or concerns, um, regarding hiring a city employee who has a private business to do this?
No, I don't think it's a conflict.
Okay. Well, then I make a motion to accept this.
I have one question, where does the, where does the, oh, where it goes to, the nine-one-one center, or where does it go to?
Yes, it does.
So we gotta wait for, for reaction from the nine-one-one center for the problem?
That's what most of your panic buttons were, that's why they all were.
Alright, one thing I want to mention, I know you had an issue down there in the code office a couple months ago. Okay?
About two weeks ago, Jim.
Is that one you and I were referring to?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
We called you, no, last week, last week they called.
They call you all the time now, but, uh, what I'm getting at is, I, I think, I get this system put in, the mayor's pan is right, his department. And, uh, it was utilized, then I think there should be arrest for disorderly conduct or something from the police department.
We can look at the.
I, I mean, the, the gentleman was in here, caused a disturbance here, that's.
What do you mean?
Okay?
The only question with that would be, we would have to give a training to the employees to make sure that there's a reason when you use it, when not to use it.
That's one of my concerns, exactly, but I think if it is utilized, and the police department shows up, somebody's held accountable for it.
Well, that's under your, um.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
The, uh, the suggestion I would make is to allow the chief to do a training session and say, this is what rises to the level of disorderly conduct, et cetera. If it rises to that level, hit the button, and that way, hopefully, we're getting tit-for-tat in that the employees know that this is going to be a citation. And they're taking it seriously enough to only hit the button when there is that kind of severity. But at the same time, I mean, obviously, if you have an active shooter or something, dear God, a, a button's gonna be a lot faster than a nine-one-one call sometimes, so.
Well, here, and I just want to make sure that customers coming in the door, understand that some of the things in the past is not going to be acceptable. Some of the things they say to our employees.
Agreed, you just, you can't post that without a panic button, that would make more sense.
No, but we can certainly begin advertising that what either posted a sign about unacceptable behavior will not be a problem, you know, it's going to be tolerated, wrongful abuse of employees, the top of the list.
Taking that one step further, if, 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 it would come to that point that, that, that would have to be done, that that person should be brought from the building. Whether it's a business plan or whatever.
We did do that once, yeah.
Yeah, because it's sensors.
Alright.
So there's a motion, right?
So, let's review this motion. I'll make a motion to accept this, uh, the, the security system for city hall. But before the city system is activated, the employees need to have adequate training scheduled with, uh, the police chief.
Second that.
Eister?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
And I'll work in tandem with Jody to get that arranged, do it all on the job.
Alright, thanks.
Ms. Doctor, donation.
Yes, so the in-your packets is the proposed agreement between the city of Sundory and Sundory Revitalization for, um, the Chestnut Street, uh, city warehouse, four forty-one, four forty-three Chestnut Street. Um, for the purpose of removing the buildings, constructing a parking lot. There would be parking access for city residents, and the ownership of that lot would revert back to the city of SRI no longer, would be the owner. I would know, Chris, if you wanted to add any more details to that.
Uh, the only thing that, I, I won't stay, but if there was a motion to it, the only request was that there was a date of time for this to happen. I know there's still stuff in there, so it probably makes sense to push that maybe to New Year, just put the contract in place, so that way, because SRI will have to do an application to have the taxes waived, um, at that property like they did with another property, which will happen in the fall. But if this agreement in place will give the ability to do that at that point. So it's the only thing that is not in there, that just has to be decided upon a motion.
When that, just, I think we're talking about the same thing, Chris, Chris, the, there's a two-year limit.
So it would be two years from the contract date?
It is two years from the contract date, so I think that's already covered.
Yeah, it would give it a little bit more time to, for, till, till the city got things out of there, then the contract date went in, and then it'd be two years from that date, so it had to come down.
From what I understand, we were going to have access to keep storing our stuff there until there's a plan in place by SRI.
We can't, and that's something that can happen at that point, but it, again, so that way the, the taxes issue can be resolved for next year. Again, you, you vote.
Chris, I, I think I'm following just what you're saying, because I think we should transfer, as long as we have a time period. Keep our stuff in, I know Steve and I only go with that stuff in there, it's lost.
I don't think that there was any issue with anything staying in there until the demolition video was sent.
Right, okay.
It's not specifically spelled out in this, but I don't think they're gonna say get out.
I'll do a round agreement, that would be part of the ownership transfer. That simply gives us for a dollar the ability to keep our stuff in there until such time as the demolition agreement is fresh and ready to go, and then we would have to remove.
They're not looking at their job in your future.
No, they just need this resolved about with the rack piece.
Right, I got you, okay.
Yeah, it was, the funding's not there, they gotta go out and find the funding. Yeah, plenty of time.
Is that the kind of agreement you're thinking of, Jim?
And one other just, uh, question, Chris, like, instead of permit to park there, I'm, I mean, they go, like, is it just to say, hey, you can park there? Or is it just gonna cost you X amount of dollars a year to park there, or is like?
It'll likely be similar to what the city wanted, is to where it's just to cover the administrative cost of it and split, and then you would have it. And it's only gonna be, from what I gathered, when we were talking about it, was just people that live around there, and they're actively using it now. It's not gonna be like for businesses to apply there and then like, we have our, our permits available. But yeah, there will, there'll probably be just to cover the administrative, but it's again, no more than what?
The city.
The city term is worth the same thing.
That motion?
I don't, I don't think anybody made a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Reese?
Stay with me.
Eister?
Yes.
Reese's gonna take care of me.
On what?
Snow removal.
Once, once the transfer, oh yeah, that was something that you guys have to do another motion, it's the date, you didn't pick a date. To put this contract in place, unless you wanna wait until a round agreement goes in, I don't know how that works, Joe, that's legal.
Um, well.
Well, we just approved the contract for today, Bill.
This, well, this contract isn't the deed, this is a agreement to donate. Um, there would then be the need to, let me just look at it real quick, and again, I wrote it, but it was a couple weeks ago, the. We're agreeing to transfer it to them, and I think they needed this agreement to do the rack piece stuff, however, there's.
They've already voted to accept the agreement.
They've already voted to accept it.
Yeah.
Therefore, I think this agreement is what allows them to apply for the monies that they need. Um, nobody has said to me that there is a date certain for a transfer of the property, so I don't believe that has been decided yet. Um, until the property is transferred, we not only continue to own it, we continue to maintain it, everything else. As soon as somebody tells me that we need to transfer this property, I do a deed, it gets signed, this is already agreeing to do the, you know, do the transaction. And then it would become the responsibility of the buyer to maintain it, do the snow removal, do those things, and give us the rental permission necessary to continue to use the building, um, during the period of time that, prior to demolition.
So it sounds like what we'll need to do is just get back in touch with SRI side and with everyone else on, when that should go in, and then Joe will just draft to be able to do it.
And what I'm gonna ask for is a motion to that, um, with the passage of this agreement, that we don't have to vote again to transfer the property, that the property would be transferred upon the approval and request of SRI, that way we don't have to come back again to do that.
Well, we should have the rental agreement in place.
Oh yeah, the rental agreement would be in place. We don't transfer until we have a rental. But that's up to you guys, I mean, if you wanna come back and vote to finalize the transfer, but once we do this, we're in our contracts, we have to transfer it. So there's really no reason to hold off, other than the rental agreement we talked about.
But when we come up with a rental agreement, that would have to come to us for approval beforehand.
Yeah, I guess it should, um.
Are you talking about that dollar a year?
Yeah, yeah.
You just vote the same time?
Yeah.
We, you can have, not to interrupt, I, next council meeting.
Oh yeah, easily, I can have it by the mall.
I, I think we'll just keep them both for this with the council meeting.
That's fine, that's fine.
Steve, were you guys about once it's demolished, who's gonna maintain it, or now?
Well, I mean, additionally, I mean, until it's, until you guys take over, I mean, we're currently taking care of the snow removal and everything else.
Yeah, so the, the conversation has to still be had from SRI level of whether they'll reach out, kind of like the Albright Center right now, or they reached out for the contract to rate, or just hire someone to do it. Yeah, so that, that conversation has not been had yet, but it will be.
Okay, so this is tableled now, until every, the other.
The other thing already passed.
Yeah, the agreement's passed. It's just the, um, the de-transfer and the rental agreement's coming at the next council meeting.
And Chris, maybe what you can do is talk with SRI, see if they will, uh, do an agreement, I could even have a deed here for the next meeting along with the rental agreement. You guys can approve it all at one time, and as long as SRI's agreed to accept it, we can do that.
I'll just see with the, the date of acceptance again, because they were worried about the, the tax stuff.
Okay.
So that'll be the only thing that I'll have to do for the SRI.
Yeah, that's why I said, you know, I understand.
And Joe, they can be here, everybody can sign, you can record it the next day.
You got it. Chris?
Got it, we'll look at that then. Can you do a future date, or you just have to be that date?
It'd be, that date, it doesn't have to be recorded the next day. But if everybody's gonna be here, just let me know, and I'll bring a, a note, yeah, we're gonna have a note.
I guess my question was if, if the, the date of execution was to be one-one-twenty-one, can you do that then for a future date?
No, we can do an agreement that the, put it this way, if we were gonna do that, I wish I'd known before I did this agreement, because we could have put that date in there, we're gonna have to maintain responsibility for it, although this is basically an agreement of sale. Okay, is what this agreement is, we're donating it instead of selling it, but this is basically an agreement of sale. And, uh, we're gonna remain responsible for any accidents there on, and whatever, until such time as it's transferred. If SRI wants to do a transfer date of one-one-twenty-one, I think that's gonna have to go back through the council.
Alright, well, I'll go back, because it was already, it was, it was voted to accept this contract, and then this just voted about it. So I'll just go back and see if they wanna change anything.
And if you can contact me in the interim and let me know. And if you can contact me in the interim and let me know, um, I'll draw something up accordingly.
Yeah, sounds good.
Captain Harris?
Uh, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but we've been dealing with this Smirlic, uh, the storage units property for a while, and I guess with everything, yeah, with everything going on with COVID, there's a need for another extension on that at this point.
And that, and COVID's one of the issues, uh, the other issue is, um, elevations for the store water line. Uh, they're looking at some different options of, uh, previous homes that were on the line, hopefully maybe able to happen to those five levels, or looking at maybe, uh, build a land up to slow it, that it goes into the store drains, uh, things on that line. John, would you like to put that in too? Would you like to add anything?
Sorry, I'm hearing you something.
Would you like to add anything?
Uh, basically, uh, it's the second extension of ninety days, the first one was eaten up a lot by COVID nineteen, it was, it was pretty out of service, so. And, uh, we wanted to investigate another alternative with the municipal party, which was cursed with. And, uh, in order to do all that and get it to us in time to react, you'll, it would need another extension. Now, to grant on that, we would, the city would be forced to, uh, act on the plan itself. And if you disapprove it, we'd have to resubmit anew and reviews would start anew, and, uh, begin filing dates, so. I, I would recommend that the extension be granted.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Which you already had to resubmit once already, because of previous entry.
I'll second the motion.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
That should be new business, but, uh, the first reading for bill number twenty twenty dash fourteen fireworks, this is, uh, new legislation, it would revoke, replace any other prior ordinances related to fireworks in our code. Um, it would regulate the use of fireworks in the city of Sundbury, it defines the consumer display of novelty fireworks occupied in temporary structures. There are conditions and prohibitions for use, sale and storage of the consumer fireworks. There's a pro- prohibition on municipal property, including streets, sidewalks and parks. And there is regulations as far as the storage of consumer fireworks in temporary structures. There are provisions for, um, fireworks displays and for permits. And it, um, provides for the authority of Sundry police officers to confiscate materials. The violations and penalties range from second degree misdemeanor to second or third degree felony. There is a paragraph, section two on page two of it, you have that in front of you, number eight, regarding consumer fireworks, should be prohibited at any time or on any date except between the dates of, so the council would need to choose, uh, what dates that consumer fireworks would be permitted to be used, and beginning at a certain time and ending at a certain time, so you would wanna set those parameters for, uh, using consumer fireworks. So if you wanna take it from the first of July to the seventh of July, whatever you would want to do.
And I'll jump in, the reason, well, the way this was written is such that basically, as Jody said, everything's prohibited at any time outside of whatever dates you're gonna put in here. And the way it's prohibited, you obviously can't tell people what they can do on their private property. But if sparks, anything else is gonna go on the house next door, if noises, et cetera, are gonna bother the neighbors, um, we can prohibit that. Um, we can also prohibit the use of fireworks on any city property, including streets and parking lots and things like that. I did some pretty extensive research on other municipalities with this type of a, uh, I'll call it a statute, but, uh, code section, and quite honestly, this is a compendium of all of those. But again, the best way to do this is just to say, no fireworks except between, you know, and out there, you say, July first and July tenth, or if you say May and June, I, I don't care. But the point is, I need dates, and beginning at what time in the morning and ending at what time at night, that you'd allow fireworks to be utilized, um, for the purpose of the city.
Uh, Chief, since it appears you're gonna be pretty involved with this ordinance, what's your recommendation?
Well, I, I mean, do you ask as much, so the dates have to be set in, or can it be something put in by resolution by the city every year? Your, your base, only reason I say that, obviously Memorial Day always falls on Monday, but the Fourth of July always moves around. So, because that's, that's what the dates I was looking at, to allow people to do that. Now, they still have to abide by the hundred and fifty foot rule, the hundred foot rule, you know, the cities would waive things at their discretion to say, well, we're not allowing people to have their fireworks, like going in front of their houses, maybe in the street or something, like during these times, but they have, they have certain provisions that's enough. Uh, that's, that was my only question about the date part, because it does fall, it moves, that one, the one date moves. For, I'm sorry.
Is the flexibility built in for, uh, commercial?
Yes, yes.
Like, like.
Yeah, they have to get, they have to get their permits.
They have to get a permit, like they already own the city.
Yep.
The consumer, the consumer, I'm sorry, Rick, this is more about the consumer purchase and use of the fireworks than it is the, the, the commercial has always been regulated, and they always needed a permit, and that just kinda continues through this.
And this, and this ordinance, that's what they're talking about, the display fireworks.
Is there anywhere that people can even shoot them that isn't within a hundred and fifty feet of a structure? It makes it impossible, so how do you enforce it?
Why don't we, why don't we limit it, limit it to the third, fourth, and fifth, or the third, fourth of July?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's obviously what you can do, and in reference to what Brad said, I think if you put the date in here, you can always by resolution change it, you know.
That's fine, because if the, if the fourth falls on a Thursday, okay, or even like a Thursday or Friday, closer to the weekend, you know all weekend, people are gonna be celebrating the fourth that weekend, you know what I mean, or even if it falls on a Monday, they're gonna be celebrating Saturday and Sunday, you know, they're gonna, a couple of days, so that's why I say give the city the flexibility to set parameters on dates when it comes down to it, if at all.
Why, why can't we worry there, it's like the date before Memorial Day and the day after Fourth of July or something?
You can do whatever you want.
What you can't do, because I said don't put dates on it, it's no different than yours, it's no different than the, uh, the alcohol waiver you guys did for the summer. You guys did pretty much, you waived it till the whole month, so that way you give people more flexibility by not putting certain days in, because you could extend it, or maybe the two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary's come up, well, that week is gonna be a big, bangin' week for everybody to have a good time. You know, maybe you wanna save devouring that year, is you wanna extend it for a couple hours per day.
So it could be used all the time, it's kinda like the parking work.
I'm sorry, say it again.
It's almost like the parking work, it's in, in effect all the time, and then gets lifted for part of the year.
Yeah, you, right. You guys, by, they make by resolution, do their own dates.
That's what this basically does.
How are you going to, are you going to monitor, if you said about your own property, but there isn't a property in town that's fifty foot away from it?
That's why it's written that way.
So I, I guess that's, are you saying fireworks aren't allowed at all?
Yep. Well, no, I'm saying if you can find a place that's not on city property, that's, you know, and again, that's why these ordinances are written this way, like I said, I did a lot of research into other municipalities.
It follows a lot of the state guidelines.
It, it follows a lot of the state guidelines, but all the municipalities do that. The only thing I would say is, again, if you wanna put dates in, put dates in, you can change it every single year by resolution if you want to, but at least everybody knows that's the, probably the minimum, and people can count on that.
So the issue I have with not having dates in this one, and making a pre-resolution and maybe possibly changing each year, those violations are pretty strict, misdemeanor penalties.
Well, those are.
No, I, no, I know, but, so if we put in here, the first week of July this year, the next, next year it's changed by a couple of days, how are people gonna know the exact information regarding this?
That's what I meant when I said count on.
Unless you just allow them others to watch.
You say the, the week before.
Or the week after.
Well, right now they're shooting from Memorial Day to Labor Day, they're still going right now.
They still do.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll stop. I, I like the idea of making it just Memorial Days, the first Monday, and then the Fourth of July goes around. The day before Memorial, okay, and then the day of, after Fourth of July, no more.
Allow from then to then?
Yeah.
The day, like he said, the day after the fourth, though, the fourth's on a Monday.
That's true, they're gonna want to shoot.
You're gonna be celebrating all week, or a Friday, or a Wednesday, or a Friday, or Thursday, Friday.
But you can do seven days from the fourth, then you know you're gonna get a week.
You could do a week before and a week after, that gives you a two-week project period, and the weekend of before the Mo- the weekend of Memorial.
Friday of Memorial Day to one week after July.
And then on New Year's, New Year's Eve, and just lifted by a week. Oh yeah.
Yeah.
We'll pass this, and then we'll decide on the time.
That's true, do we need this for the first reading to put this in there?
We probably should have it for the first reading.
So, and then what do you guys, do you wanna time to, I think eleven.
Eleven.
Realistic.
Mustn't know the ordinance.
I think ten's too early, because that only gives you one hour to shoot.
Oh yeah. I like eleven.
One other question, are you gonna use the actual Memorial Day, the thirtieth, or are you gonna use the day it's celebrated?
Memorial Day's always on a Monday.
But then, okay, now this year was the twenty-second, so you're gonna allow the shooter from the twenty-second till the fifth of July?
No, I think they said just the weekend of Memorial Day.
Yeah, that's it, Friday of Memorial Day.
Not starting Memorial Day, ending before, not that whole period, just the weekend of Memorial Day.
But I'm saying Memorial Day, or, or why do, why do we have to put the dates in? No dates, because you're not allowed to do it, if you, you wanna do it, you gotta come get your permit, and to get the permit, you have to prove that you're.
Individuals don't have to get permits, though.
No, you're gonna lose a lot of your permits.
Yeah, this is.
People like, let's say you go down in front of the column, like when he does the display impression, he has to apply for the permit, he lost it. That kind of stuff they're looking at. Consumer fireworks, people can buy the consumer fireworks now and then go shoot them all.
So the issue we're coming up with is just for the display, the large corporations?
I don't know, it's covering both, it's covering both.
But what about the Friday of Memorial Day to one week after the Fourth of July, which would always be July eleventh, right?
Which would cover Sundry celebration.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Well, you're saying.
That's a lot of base. Are you saying that individuals, do individuals shoot off their own fireworks or Sundry celebrations without a name?
No, but it's, that, I, I think we're all.
They're shooting all for like fourteen days, because it's never gonna be, Sundry celebration's always what, the second Saturday?
Saturday.
So fourteen days from the Fourth of July, you're never gonna run past Sundry celebration, right? Because there's always two Saturdays within there, that gives them all that time, so that would be the eighteenth, right? So if you did the Friday of Memorial Day, which will change every year, but it's always the Friday of Memorial Day, to July eighteenth, don't have a start time, but have to be done by eleven o'clock. That's my motion.
You have to have a start time, because twelve oh one AM is the morning.
Oh yeah, that's true, eight o'clock. I don't know, I know people shoot them all in the afternoon from their house on Fourth of July.
So you wanna have.
I'd say noon.
What, noon?
Okay.
So twelve o'clock PM.
But during these days, they still have, have to abide by like the hundred and P.
Yeah, they still, yeah, which eliminates, which, yeah. Alright, that's my motion, noon to eleven, passing this order, this is noon to eleven, Friday of Memorial Day to July eighteen. Gotta end at July.
Got it.
Second.
I'm sure we're gonna really think about it for the next two weeks.
Yeah. And if anyone wants to change, change it then.
You said week after.
Two weeks, eighteen, that was always the same. Yeah, first and second.
Okay.
Just start down there.
Eisner?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the second reading of the Quality of Life Declaration ordinance, that is new legislation. Um, the purpose was to permit a citizen to pay a ticket rather than receive a citation for certain code violations. Um, this benefits the citizens as it removes the burden of time-consuming court, court hearing process for citations, but it also preserves a right to dispute a ticket and full due process of law, the ticket can be disputed in the same manner as a parking ticket. The subject violations included are high weeds in grass, rubbish and garbage, and snow and ice accumulation. The person must still correct their violation within twenty-four hours, they have to pay the ticket within seventy-two hours. After seventy-two hours, define the double, so we're parking ticket, um, and the city can correct the violation and charge the cost of that correction to the property owner. Um, this ordinance does not apply to declared nuisance properties, they're already in the program. Um, the first offense would be twenty-five dollars, and the additional offense of the same violation within a twelve-month period would start at fifty dollars on the ticket.
I will make that promotion as a second reading, but also say that this will not, we'll, we'll announce when this would go into effect if it passes, because we still will need to do a code department training, how to administer, how the process will work, and then we'll come back and put a date that this is gonna go into effect.
Well, who, who's taking it?
So, so.
The code?
The police department will be taking it.
I think the ordinance gives them the ability to do it.
But it really is. So we had a motion.
First motion.
Okay, Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
This is the second reading of bill number twenty twenty dash eleven on the shade trees and the shade tree commission. Um, there have been no, uh, suggestions for any recommended changes since the first reading. Um, it basically establishes the shade tree commission and also, um, establishes provisions and procedures for, uh, resp- and responsibilities for shade trees.
I make the motion to accept the second reading.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the second reading of bill number twenty twenty dash twelve, offenses against public safety. This is a amendment to ordinance number eight fifty-eight, piece in good order, which was adopted in nineteen seventy-one. The section, uh, one twenty-four dash four includes the offenses against public safety, including weapons, reporting of the treatment of wounds, throwing of missiles, bonfires, and false alarm of fire, and need for police or ambulance assistance.
Make motion to accept this.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Second reading of bill number twenty twenty dash thirteen, which is declaration of taking this as new legislation as non-code material. This ordinance is to be enacted in order to pursue the imminent domain for a small portion of a partial parcel at five hundred North Front Street. And this is necessary for the Reagan Street project and improvement of the Reagan and Front Street intersection. Um, we have made multiple attempts to the owner, to contact the owner, which have failed.
Read the motion.
Second.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
The second reading for bill number twenty twenty dash oh nine, Fire Department. This would repeal or replace, uh, ordinance number twenty-six, which would have been adopted in May of nineteen twenty-two. It updates the fire companies comprising the Sundry Fire Department, it modified the residency qualification for the fire chief. Um, had formerly been required to live within the city limits, now it's within five miles of the city limits. Um, it has modified the appeal process for disciplinary action to go to the board of representatives, it had formerly been to the, uh, city council. It establishes requirement for the maintenance fund accountability with reports from the fire department treasurer required monthly and annually.
Make a motion to adopt the second reading. Second.
Rojas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
This is obviously, uh, the non-union employee or non-uniformed employee discipline policy was presented to, uh, council meetings ago. Um, there were some, was some discussion during that council meeting, uh, after which Solicitor Reese, uh, incorporated the changes that were recommended. And basically, it does establish a progressive discipline policy and procedure to implement across all departments for the non-union or uniformed employees.
Read the motion.
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reitner.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Rojas.
Yes.
This was just on the, just as an old business, just to follow up that there was a budget review. We had that work session just prior to this council meeting. And we reviewed the revenue expenditure data for twenty years, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. I didn't, it doesn't really require. Sorry, that's all. And then now there are agenda items for discussion, the health officer position. So, those were the reasons that they're resignation. And appointed a food sanitation inspector. Qualifications for a health officer are, as listed here, they must be either a physician licensed in Pennsylvania, a registered nurse licensed in Pennsylvania, have a minimum of an associate degree, or have completed sixty credit hours in physical or biological sciences. The duties listed here include an assessment of the community health needs, the food service program, investigation and follow-up of public health complaints, communicable with communicable, disease investigation and reporting, and health information and referral. So, the question is, how would you like to, how would the council like to fill this position? Councilman Reese, did you have some?
Yeah, so my thought, if we find a physician licensed, they don't have to go through civil service. They don't have to take the exam or anything like that.
They still have to do the applications for civil service. They don't have to do the exam.
Anybody else has to. So my thought, and if anyone disagrees, let me know, was to open it up to see if there were any physicians within the city willing to volunteer to be the physician. It's essentially almost like one of our, it's a board. The Board of Health, and they would be the health officer. What we'd be looking for is, they wouldn't have to fill out reports or anything, but in a situation like we're in now, it would be nice to have someone that's a physician to lean on for advice on certain things, on closures, openings, you know. Just someone that's in there just to kind of lean on for those decisions that, that's a licensed physician. So basically, we'd just be opening it up for, see if anyone is interested, basically apply at that point then. But I don't perceive this being a paid physician, but rather a physician that's willing to donate their time for the city. In the event that we need them, be there to make that decision, if necessary. Did you guys do it any differently? I'm just, it's kind of the idea of it going.
Is this back under your department now?
I thought that, well, it didn't change.
No, it was moved to the various department.
Oh, that.
We had the conflict with the health officer. They, they moved to the mirrors.
If I remember that correctly, you're right.
I.
The biggest suggestion was, yeah, like one or two doctors just retired, maybe reach out to them with a letter, ask if they need to.
Do they, do they maintain their, I don't know how it works, do they maintain their licenses when they retire?
I do not know that.
Okay. We would just have to check on that because they may have to do the task. That's what I would think. But if you, if you don't have your license, technically, you have to go and take a civil service exam. Which they may want to do.
They just, I know two of them just retired.
You might just give them a name.
What would they do with the food service program?
So, there's a description of a food service program. It includes the food sanitation, of course, but.
It's a smart thing to do, move it back under your department, since a code person is wanting to do it.
I honestly didn't even, did it change while I was on council?
Yeah, it changed, it changed to December.
From that fail sheet.
Because the previous director wasn't getting along with the health officer.
Uh, so would you, do we vote to change it? Is that what?
It's gonna have to be, because it was, it was voted on, it was voted on, and seconded, and it was voted on to move it from, from the code.
To me, it doesn't matter. I mean, I just.
I've done four motions.
Well, you can't stand on the agenda to do that.
Oh, yeah.
I can put it on the next agenda as a voting item. In the meantime, we can explore.
No, I'm just saying we can right now.
Or you can, or you can vote to have it as a voting item.
We already started the meeting.
You would do it.
Oh, okay.
We'll get it back.
Yeah, I thought I had it, so it doesn't, I mean, but if you guys okay if we open that up to, put something on Facebook and.
I, I think it would be nice to have it open to the public instead of just reaching out to one or two people that recently retired.
I think we open it up and we reach out to them. I think you can do both.
I don't think there'll be standing in line to take it.
No, I don't know. I'm sure there's a doctor that cares enough about the city that's willing to donate their time.
Basically, in my.
I don't think there's much time.
Never has the need for a health officer.
No, but where would it be nice, like right now, like when we were deciding whether to close certain facilities and what? Would it be nice to ask a doctor that's with the city, would say, should we do this or should we?
Now, if we go through with this and we do find a health officer, does that affect the council being the overall board of health?
No, it does not.
We still, I think, make all final calls. They just take recommendations to.
Recommendations.
Right, and I think a health officer position would be able to be more engaged with assessing the community health needs, working with healthcare providers, make sure that community needs are being met. Investigation and follow-up of public health complaints, like we find, like we had a thing about somebody who played about her. Or something like that, and it would be nice to have a public health persons.
And anybody can apply for it, if they're not a physician, they'll know that they'll opt to take the civil service exam.
But, but it looks like they can be a licensed physician or a registered nurse, or.
Yes, but the licensed physician is the only one.
Correct, the licensed physician is the only one that doesn't have to take the examination.
Everyone else has to go through.
But everybody, everybody still has to be, apply to be a civil servant.
I don't think we need a motion.
County relief block grant. So the Northumberland County received federal funding of eight point two million dollars. And they are able to use that money for eligible activities that are for the prevention, preparedness, and response to the COVID-nineteen crisis. It must be utilized to assist municipalities, small business grants, and nonprofits to pay for any costs associated with the pandemic. From back dated to the first of March through the end of the year. And the county is asking for our, our, our needs. So there is, in your package, you'll see there's a description of the program, and then there's a needs assessment form that would need to be turned in by the twenty-fourth of August. I have looked at some of our COVID-related costs so far for the city. The paid leave, that's when we were paying people to stay home, and there was a stay-at-home order that fell under paid leave. And that was a total of thirty-seven thousand dollars. And there was the supply PPE cleaners and disinfectants, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred dollars. Some additional equipment, we had to buy the thermometers, and we checked the employee's temperature on the way to work. That was nine hundred dollars. Janitorial services, the police department got, they had been getting a cleaning once a week, they went to two times a week. And also, when we had the COVID-positive employee, we did an extra disinfecting fog. And so, so far, the additional janitorial services have cost us fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. We also had a number, had to have a number of meeting ads go into the paper, as we had to change out the format and venues for meetings, and that was three hundred and sixty-five. So, total so far, that identified COVID-related costs for the city are about forty-two thousand dollars. But it's important now to anticipate what else we might need in the future, including maybe a better video conferencing system in order for the continuity of local government and public participation, and being able to communicate with the public. And then I, you know, if any of the other departments have some ideas that they want to let me know, then we can put those needs together and estimate the cost to submit to the county.
Just wanted to make it nice to have some.
So like the work from home capability as well, Mayor, you were talking about the city clerk meeting, work from home capability, this might be a cost that can be covered by that. I don't know for sure.
When do they need this on, like?
It's August twenty-fourth. We want to talk about future council meetings. We had a, had go-to the public attendance by virtual means only for this meeting. Because right now, the limitation is for twenty-five, no more than twenty-five people gathering indoors. Does the council have any other preferences or ideas or recommendations for platforms for future meetings at this time?
So I'm wish, and thinking about this, we have to have access to electricity, lighting, preferably something that has a roof in case the weather is turns bad on us.
Do you think of other venues?
Internet access, something large enough that we can at least have the members of the public that want to participate to actually still come, since we can't allow them to be.
I reached out to the school district, and they don't really have anything that we could use, plus they don't want to let outsiders come in because of the, they want to protect their bubble.
Because it's extra, extra cost.
Plus an indoor.
It was still indoor.
We can use our shop originally in this. We have plenty of room down there. We can set up chairs if you want.
But that's still classified as indoor.
Yeah, indoor, indoor.
Well, I can go in my garage there.
One. What's the suggestion was the pavilion at OPG? But I don't know that it has more room than what we have right here.
Yeah. The pavilion at the OPG?
No.
How was that?
There's one by Memorial Wakeers, too.
How many people, you said?
Well, we didn't, normal people if they come out.
Probably have like fifty people.
Couple thousand.
You have the space from six feet apart?
So it seems like right now, it's.
Virtual.
It's gonna be virtual for now?
Okay. Virtual for now, then.
I mean, could you put it up in the rank? I mean, right.
It's still inside.
Yeah, but it's until. I'll be keeping the energy. So, that's the only place I can think of, that's outdoor, that can space six feet apart.
Again, the school doesn't want to have.
What's that?
School doesn't want to have. Right.
Alright, so just stick to the virtual for now, we're hopeful.
Okay.
And, but with, with the county funds, make sure we get a decent quote for an updated system, so the public can.
Yes.
We're, we're still using that same pre-conference call or whatever?
No, Zoom. We're on Zoom, and actually, the United Ways has paid for the subscription to Zoom, and we're off their license. Which is working just fine.
Yeah.
And then. Mayor, you wanted, we wanted to have a discussion about special events coming up, like.
Oh, yes, for.
Where there have been applications for use of public facilities and like the parades and those kinds of things.
So before COVID, there were a couple special event permits that were issued from the city, so I think we needed to discuss those permits that were issued, and also the community events that are coming up. No one, including myself, wants to cancel anything that the community enjoys or loves, but we have to weigh the requirements that are set forth by the guidelines in the safety of the overall community and not what makes us happy right now. And right now, we have the Santa Parade in the house coming up this year. We have a Sunday Fire Police Halloween Parade. And then we have private events that apply permits already.
Right, so I think the first one coming up in that is the Arts and Curiosities Festival, which is usually located on Stro alley. And then I took a look through numbers on the city courts that have found, in addition to, the bruise on Lake, because that was canceled.
Was pwned in December, but was put into the Albright Center.
Oh, okay.
But it's not on the city park. But it's not, it's still up in the air.
August twenty-eighth.
Twenty-four people.
Yeah, as, as the guidelines right now, we can't do it. So it's, it's.
It's because of the elections.
Twenty-fourteenth is the Fifth Street Food Festival. It's from the library, and it's outdoors. There are food trucks. People walk through. Maybe they'll be able to maintain their social distance or wear their mask if they're too close together.
What if our neighboring communities, I know Seals Grove canceled one, just their Halloween parade? And that's it? Have they done anything else?
So I think you have to think about what the event is and how the, how the people attend it. So do they attend it by congregating in one area, staying in one area, like a music concert or a parade, and reminding the streets? Or are they moving through an outdoor area, that if it were spaced efficiently, that it would maintain some distance?
So for.
I think one car shows almost at the weekend. And they maintain the distance and ask you to wear masks when you go in, but after you've been in, it's a few more. But it'd be more walking around. I mean, we have the best. And sometimes there's a hundred and fifty cars, you know, thirty cars, so we meet a lot of people. Last week was hurting, and they also had a car going in there.
But they're all outdoors in big spaces?
Outdoors, it's all tall, filled with spaces.
So for instance, you have the Fifth Street Food Fest, which is an entire open street, and probably, I'm just assuming, the parking lot of the library.
They use that little park there, too.
Okay, so they have, they have adequate room.
There's a lot.
Then you have the Curiosity Fest that comes up later on this year, that's probably put on. But that's condensed in Stro Alley.
That gets a lot of people. Can you just move it?
And they also have.
Right, so if she can, if, if the person who's organizing it can modify to accommodate the space, and we, maybe we ask the person that's putting on the event if they can do that.
The only thing, I don't know.
And if, if, if they're not willing to modify the event or change the location, we're within our, our means for safety reasons to cancel the event, right, Joe?
Correct.
Or Joe, are we required, the governor's, is it, I don't know, it's mandated, it's a recommendation, the two fifty, because it says, that was the trouble we had with SRI. It was if you, unless it was a ticketed event, you could control the two hundred and fifty people or less, you were not supposed to have it.
Correct.
Are we supposed to abide by that exactly? Technically, none of those could happen.
If, if the city approves the, the special event permits, and we're allowing these events to take place, and we get a mass amount of people, we get more than two hundred and fifty, does the municipality risk losing any kind of funding or benefits from the higher governments?
Yes. Yes.
The governor already, the governor already gives a limited account.
Let's call a protest.
Unless it's a protest.
Yes, call the protesters. Never did anyone, one coronavirus protest.
Alright, so we do need to figure out what we're doing with the private events here.
So it's sounding like then.
You don't have a choice.
Even if we, even if the combination can be.
What, can't you put it back on and say, hey, if you want to have, you gotta rope it off and have tickets, and then it's on you at that point? Can you do that?
You can do that.
That, yeah, I agree, that's the only way to. Like if they do it at, in front of the library, and do it in Stro Alley, wherever they move, and say, hey, you gotta do this, if you don't do it, you can't have it. Can we just pass, or can we just vote to allow exactly what the governor's wording is, no open attendance events? Basically, it's no open attendance events until the governor lifts that mandate.
Correct.
So that's. That's my. But here's a que, then what's the difference, another question, what's the difference if someone in Seals Grove has food trucks on their property, it's not an event, but they're just there, and people come? Is there a difference there? But, but, that, that's not using public property, though, that's the difference, because these ones are asking you to use city property.
These are private entities asking to use our property.
I got you. I mean, because I think anybody, technically, any business could grow whatever festival, whatever they wanted.
Right.
On their property.
On their property.
I know, there's Nobles do their, they did their craft show or whatever.
They canceled their craft show now.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
And, and.
Spyglass.
Spyglass just got canceled two weeks ago. They were, they were gonna have private, basically concerts, and they came in and canceled them.
With the state?
Do we need to vote on that?
There's still having that one on Saturday. Yeah, they're having two hundred and fifty at a time, but they're not having, they're doing exactly what we're saying we can do.
Yeah.
They closed them down and having open, everybody coming in.
I mean, so, do we need to vote to do exactly what I just said?
Yes. No, we don't have to vote to do it.
No, we don't.
That's already the law. We just can't give any permit, let me answer this. We can't give permits to anybody to have an open enrollment in events.
That's so much.
So, we can give permits to people who are gonna say, we will limit the tickets to two hundred and forty-nine, you know what I mean? Or whatever, and rope it off and keep it in a section, as Councilman Rojas suggested.
Be less. Yeah, they'd have to tell somebody vendors are gonna be there.
Exactly, two hundred and forty-nine people, so it's gonna be tough to.
But that, that's if it's on city property.
That's.
They say, if they want to go to, say, up at Byder's, that's private, they can do whatever they want to do at that point, as long as.
As far as we're concerned.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So if the library said, hey, we're just gonna move our Fifth Street food truck back to our parking lot, there's nothing we can do.
Correct. So what are you doing with the home parade?
People need time to prepare their floats, and with all the surrounding communities that I've heard of shutting down, it's gonna be a huge influx of people now coming to Sunday for this Halloween parade if they.
It's an uncontrolled attendance event, right?
On city property.
And we, because I don't know how. Yes, we, cause I don't know how far in advance people apply that, I don't know, cause can we wait until the last moment mandate, then? You know, not.
Could you table, my suggestion would be to table it pending the governor's mandate changing.
How long do you think you need?
Or, or, or what, can we keep it to, um, late six?
The governor doesn't like.
That's what I mean, table it until.
September. September, you won't have to send it by September.
And the organizers will have to be able to decide for themselves if they can manage the organization and sponsorship.
Cause they need the fire police to. And if that's too much, they have to cancel on their own and that's at least gives them a chance.
I'd say we hold off till September first on canceling, that's just a suggestion. That's up to you guys.
Because then we get into the issues with like the, the Stro Alley at Curiosity, what, that's, how much is that?
We're declining, that one, we have to decline that permit until, until the thing is lifted. Or they, or they come in with a, they modify their permits.
Those base regulations for two hundred and forty-nine people?
It's just the year of that, if, if event, if you have an open attendance event, you're not supposed to have it.
Outdoors, it still has to be outdoors.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be outdoors, cause that was what we were gonna run in with one group, we were gonna do it September down at the river, we could only sell no, with vendors, we probably give them one hundred and fifty tickets, uh, at the end of the day, so.
I think as long as the, the governor's restrictions are in place, that the Halloween parade shouldn't go through that, because they're gonna need adequate time to prepare the floats and everything.
I think you should let that up to them.
Yeah. I'd say it was supposed to like, it's at a certain date.
We don't control, like, you control.
We closed market, yeah.
No, 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 but we don't, we can't tell them to cancel.
Well, we can tell them.
We can tell bash what's happening.
But then, yeah, cause technically, like, if your school district is ahead, you can just, our stadium, do a thing around the stadium. I know a lot of, a lot of the schools do like a parking lot thing for kids. Trump or trees, yeah, 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 we can't stop any of those, so I think we just wait it out, exactly that, if we, we wait and then. Do, does the, does the fire, fire police run the parade, right?
Yeah.
Do they apply for a permit or we just say?
The city, the city applies for the permit to close Market Street.
But they don't do anything else beyond that.
Do we know if that was approved or?
Cause they don't end up stopping.
I don't know, I would have to look.
So why don't we just check with the, now and see what they dropped their date, it's like, when, when do they gotta know, when's too far, when's too close, what's their date? And then we just put that as that, but then any other application that comes in for an open attendance event, have to be under the guidelines. You have to be under the guidelines, can't be open attendance or you got a. And that's until further notice.
Have, let me just ask one question, Mayor, maybe for you, or maybe Jody knows, I don't know, the, have they made an application to us yet? The Sunbury Fire Police?
I believe so.
They may, they may make the application for the stro, street.
But not for the.
Hello, it's Jo Lynn.
Hey, Jo Lynn.
They did, they did do their application and it is submitted to PennDOT already. And same with the Fireman's Memorial as well.
Right, but I meant the permit for a city permit, Jo Lynn, to have a parade, a gathering.
We only do, we only do the city application for private use and we, um, they wrote a letter into us and we voted on it and approved that they would be allowed to do the parade.
So we can have time.
Yeah.
And that's the same for the Fireman's Memorial, which is the week before.
Okay.
Yeah, the Fireman's Memorial is October eleventh, the Halloween parade is October fifteenth.
So if they tell us, hey, we have to have an answer from you guys by September fifteenth, we know we can't live with the other month. Then, then we know we gotta decide by that September meeting. And if the governor hasn't lifted the mandate, that's it. That's closed though, that's a closed attendance event, right?
No, it's right up.
Yeah, then you're playing favorites, then you're gonna catch. If they do tickets, yeah, you just gotta be careful. The Fireman's Memorial is lucky, they get a hundred, lucky, but it's technically.
Yeah, but you gotta, you have to.
So now the city's following the mandate.
Okay. This is a great, right, I'm saying, he provides a report here, it's in your packet, but this basically what it says, city of Sunbury, they're just doing the flood mitigation application. The police department, he's applying for grants for radios and for the building, although we haven't specified which grants for which particular things. Yes, and then for sweep as well, he has all the information, so he's sweet to, um, you know, applying. He had asked about the DC and RBRIS and, um, he's keeping an eye on when they come open so that you can put those applications in.
The fire police, where they stand, they give you a packet of a list?
Yeah, the list that is there on the, on the slide here, radio system, HVAC system, tower lights, trucking equipment, those are the things that they provide, the list they provided to me.
So can we apply for these grants ourselves?
We are good.
Good.
Why take the time to put all that effort into all that information together, we probably could. The trouble, and if Jo Lynn's on the line, Jo Lynn, you can answer me, you have enough time in a day to put, I don't know, five hours even, ten hours a week into grant writing?
No. No, I do not, and let me go back to that, when you guys talked about that, I was hired initially to write grants. Once my title changed, my job description changed and I'm supposed to assist with grants, so that was taken out of my job description, it was never put back into the city clerk role.
So who's, who's supposed to write the grants for the city, Jo Lynn?
That was put into Jo, Jody's role.
We went, no, I think it was.
And I'm back, I could've backed up.
And then we hired a contractor.
And then, yes, and then you hired the contractor, so, but then update, it never got updated, no, no, um, job description or the contract got updated with that.
Jody, I'll ask you, we didn't have this guy.
No, so, and that was the thing, there's some grant writing is very time consuming. Also, this gentleman has more, uh, and, and network established and finding other grants that I was not aware of and looking into grant databases, so he actually accesses more grant opportunities. If I, you know, if that was my only job to look at constantly the grant databases and keep an eye on when they come open, when the opportunity is to apply, then, you know, I'd do that, but that's not my only.
I think one of the other grants that he did apply for is, uh, facilitator, that, the body cam grant.
Right, and so here like, um.
You don't, you don't have it, you're looking at your report, there's a lot of grants that are listed on the outside of that that he applied.
Right, or in the packet that the council members got a report more that, of other grants that he's also researched.
How we receive any grants?
I don't know, I, I don't think we received any funding from his grant writing at this point. Now, he's also doing the, like the Art Street Streetscape. Um, that grant is due by September thirtieth, so he's been given all of that, um, documentation, we applied for it last year, didn't get it. Um, so that's all now, he's gonna put that grant together and submit that to DCD. Same thing in the Streetscape project for Market Street, that would be submitted by the end of September. And then beyond that, we have these other, this is just, I would kind of put a sample, just the big street projects and the timings. So the Susquehanna Avenue, um, storm and sewer separation project, there are grants that will be need, that will need to go in this year. For instance, the H two OPA, the, um, CDVG, well, that's city property, CDVG competitive grant. Um, and there will be, you know, so the H two OPA is a big one. And then there's the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer, again, will go in this fall for the Northern Flood Wall opening project. That's also kind of associated with the Susquehanna Avenue project.
Probably a benefit, maybe at the next meeting or in the September meeting to have him either on there or here, to basically, cause I don't know how much he got shut down with covid, I don't know how many grants pushed back their application deadlines. I don't know all of that, but we'll look at what he's actively applying for, I don't even know when he's closed, so I think it would be nice to know.
I agree with Chris.
If it's actually working, cause we don't know, we said when we hired him, if he catches five of them, it probably worth it in the end if we weren't gonna fly for it in the beginning, but we hope he catches a lot more than that, obviously.
And the latest report's broken down, we, we don't know which grants go to which.
Projects, alright, so I'll work with him on a different style of reporting where we want to know exactly what grants he submitted on what dates and when we're expecting to hear back and what they were submitted for.
Not much yet.
Okay.
Yep.
Isn't there a way to follow these grants once we apply, the website itself, so we can check and see how our grant's going?
Something you settle on, I mean, not.
I mean, shouldn't he be passed out along to us?
I don't know which one you.
In my eyes, for a thousand dollars a month, month, we're not getting very much from this gentleman here, as you're forty for us.
But how, how long has it been since he's been employed, but.
It's been seven to eight months now, we pay.
But how, that's what we gotta find out, he's had a lot to bill us, and we paid him every time?
Every month, plus I'll tell him three thousand, three thousand, I'll retain fees, first came on board.
So when did he start?
We got like, we got into what, nine thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars in this guy.
January is when we. Twelve was the full amount was for the full year.
Yeah, plus the retaining fee.
Twelve plus retaining.
Yeah, but that counted towards the, was twelve plus the retaining?
And we're buried, we got retaining fee, the only guys put through the three thousand and we put in a thousand dollars a month on.
Was the retaining the first couple of months?
There's a lot of better ways, this guy's producing a thousand dollars a month to be spent in the city.
Well, Chris, when we just, when we, I don't remember the retaining fee, I remember the thousand dollars a month.
I do too, I don't remember the retaining, I don't remember that.
What he also supposed to give us, ten, ten a month?
Yeah, and then he said if he wasn't, they would carry over, that's probably need him here, because again,
Right.
Kevin, to, to pay someone to do ten grants a month is gonna cost a lot more than a thousand dollars. So to throw out already that this guy's not doing anything for us is, is not right, so, cause I mean.
Where is it not for us, Chris?
That's what I'm saying, that's what we gotta ask him, so just to throw it out there, if this guy's terrible, it's wrong, cause we, we're not even giving him the chance to explain it. That's what I'm saying, you're attacking, this guy's not here.
I'm not attacking him, I'm just asking questions, where is this money born and how's he inspect?
That's what we can, we can answer.
We'll find out.
Yes.
To be continued. Tomorrow, I don't know about tomorrow, next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Brown, where are we at?
Lantern Fly.
You raise it or what?
So the Northumberland County Conservation District provided some information about a spotted lantern fly. Northumberland County now included in the list of quarantine, um, counties, and so there are requirements for people that are working in agriculture or, for instance, like, they'll be working, moving ground around, moving around in wooded areas to be on the lookout for the spotted lantern fly, and there are some pictures of it. And those are the counties. Northumberland County's added in twenty twenty-two. Announcements. Uh, accepting police officer applications still until the August twenty-fourth at twelve P M, the Martin Heritage Tour, fifteenth anniversary committee meeting will be meeting August twenty-seventh. And the next council meeting will be August twenty-fourth, and it will be, uh, council members in chambers and city officials in chambers and, uh, public attendance by zero.
Alright.
Public comment?
Hey, Jody, um, Council, it's Victoria Rosenkranz. Jody, I was on the thing about the Santa, so clearly by your discussion, I guess what we're gonna do is wait closer, obviously, into October, end of October, as far as making a decision for that stuff?
Yes, and you, you had talked to me about some modifications you had in mind for.
Right.
And things like that, so I think that, of course, you can continue to work those as a contingency, but a final decision, I guess.
Okay, and, yeah, and my only other thought was too, as far as November with decorating the city, um, again, with the governor's recommendations or mandates, I'm not sure if we'll have the prisoners available um, to help us decorate, so I guess, um, that's something I can ask Jo Lynn to, uh, communicate with the state on that.
Yeah, we can, um, we can ask that question.
Okay, alright, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Vicky, as of right now, they are not allowing prisoners out to help with anything.
I didn't think so, so we'll, we'll just go along here as planned and we'll, we'll figure it out, so we have a little time, so, um, I have volunteers, um, on standby or people that actually helped last year, so we, we can discuss that and what we have to do as far as volunteer applications and things like that, so I, I'm, I'm working on other plans, so, you know, we'll make this as smooth as we can and have the best holiday we can in the city, so we'll, we'll figure it out, so.
Hey, anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Victoria Matthews, um, I just wanna thank you all for everything that you're doing. And, um, Jody, you and I had spoken last week, as many of you might know, I started an organization called the I Am Alliance that, um, works basically to advocate for and support LGBTQIA teens in this area. We've been involved in several protests recently, we did one in Mifflenberg in response to wingers, I'm sure you all saw all the controversy surrounding that, and then this last weekend, we did one in Milton. We were hoping to do one in Sunbury along the, like, Riverwalk area, but with the recent uptick in covid cases, especially in Northumberland County, we're kind of, we're kind of putting all of that on hold until we at least see a downturn and possibly get, um, some revisions on the governor's policy, so I just wanted to kind of introduce myself and let you know where we stand on things like that. Of course, public safety is our number one concern, anytime we do any of the public events, we don't block any roads, we stay on public property, mostly the sidewalks, we don't block any traffic, we don't interfere with traffic. Um, and we do require social distancing and everyone wears masks, the only people who did not wear masks at either of our events were counter protesters, but everyone involved with, um, with our group and if not us, then who, who was with us? They also wore masks and practiced social distancing procedures, so if we move forward, know that that will be, um, of utmost priority to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? This meeting's now adjourned, hang in for a minute.